On that river.
Like called over the March 23 Clive City Council meeting, would the clerk please call? Mayor Edwards here, council members Klein, McCoy, Judkins, Weaver, Michelini. Would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda with one change, that is, the life-saving award presentation will be deferred to a later meeting.
With change.
Second, motion second to approve the agenda with the one change is noted. Further discussion, if not, all those in favor say aye, opposed nay, the agenda is approved. Next up, we have the citizens' presentation, this is the opportunity for a citizen to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And Pete, do we have anyone online tonight that would like to approach the council?
Not at this time, your honor.
Thank you, do we have anyone in the chamber that would like to post the council? If you would come forward, give us your name, address for the record. And just to remind everyone of our principles that we follow, character counts endeavoring at all times, remote and model the principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And we expect everyone to adhere to those principles in the chambers. So please come forward and identify yourself for the record.
Well, you may remember that I am the no mo may person that appeared several weeks ago. And I want to thank Mayor Edwards for following up on my request, who called me on the telephone, which was very pleasant, thank you. I also want you to know the organist and baby steps, these are baby steps. I want you to know that the Interfaith Green Coalition has endorsed no mo may. The Des Moines Citizens Task Force for Sustainability has endorsed it. The Central Iowa Sierra Club has endorsed it. The Drake Environmental Action League has endorsed it. The Roosevelt Environmental Club endorsed it. And the mayor and the city staff of Des Moines have endorsed no more may. So I also want to thank the city council for approving the spring and summer projects promoting pollinators to in our city parks and trails. Thank you very much. It demonstrates that Clive City is has a commitment toward environmental regeneration. And so during the month of May, I plan to follow no mo may. And by not mowing my lawn, it is likely I will be in defiance of ordinance 2761-17-2008. So I am asking the city council to consider those of us who plan to observe no mo may as good citizens, working to restore fertility to the land without the use of chemicals and attempting to increase value pollinators to our environment to lift the enforcement of that ordinance for the month of May, so that we will not be subjected to incrimination or ordinance violations. That's why I'm here. Presently, one more paragraph. Mankind kills, poisons, burns, and quells life on earth. This will only cease when regeneration begins. Every day that passes, we lose the opportunity to bring back into alignment life with the living world. Someone some time ago decided a perfectly manicured green lawn was a homeowner's dream. With massive advertising campaigns, chemical companies now profit at the cost of Mother Nature and possibly our health. Our blue skies are obscured with toxic chemicals called chemtrails. GMO seeds and glyphosate destroys the soil and our human health. 5G now beams down on us from outer space. Let's fight back. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And I believe in checking with the council earlier, there was not support for suspending enforcement of the ordinance. So I just wanted to share that with you, but again, we've indicated our commitment, as you mentioned, to pollinators in our parks and others. Pete, I don't know if you want to mention some of the other options that homeowners have.
Yeah, but happy to discuss further, there are other strategies that have been used in some communities in the Midwest that introduce pollinator encouraging plants to an existing lawn that also though stand up to sort of a three-inch mow. So that could be another way to how we could think about approaching this long term as well.
I think the SQR project is a great direction towards this as well, if we'll follow up with that as well with the soil quality restoration piece that we've. You don't use, shake your head, no, but you don't use pesticides, you don't use as many fertilizers. If that's not true, then that was what was sold to us along with water retention and all that. So maybe you want to mention, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I mean, I will if I'm allowed to.
I think I mean, I want to be corrected if we're wrong, but.
Yeah, so for the audience, I'm the senior planner for Clive. I personally and professionally fully endorse no mo may, it is not a fringe movement. The soil quality restoration is fantastic for water infiltration and all of that, but it is not really directly impacting the real importance of the no mo may, which is letting those early bugs and birds and everything that comes out, they nest over the winter in the grasses and foliage just longer. And then you go longer in the season.
Though, isn't that.
Sure, that part of it, yeah, but all the species stuff, not necessarily. So, yeah, but I would love to see council consider that option in the future. And I think it's great that you came tonight, so.
You know, I'd add one thing, I understand your position on on moving forward with with your thoughts on no more may. I would remind you that that, you know, we don't drive around looking and looking for the grass, it's complaint driven, right? So if it's not bothering your neighbors, there's no complaints, then there's, you know, I wouldn't worry about it that much.
What is the height that our ordinance allows?
Seven inches.
Residential areas. In neighborhood spaces, nine inches is going to be the maximum that's allowed. In kind of the undeveloped areas, it can be a little bit higher.
So it would get people a long way through the month, I think. I bet I like the idea too, I'm not laughing, I I'm supportive.
I think we generally support the concept, but we do have an ordinance. Thank you for coming in, we appreciate it. Before we continue, I want to take a minute just to note the significance of today's date, March 23. It was Bob Johnston's birthday. So many of the improvements you see in the city today had Bob's steady hand guiding us through the bonding process. And we'll be benefiting from that bond guidance many, many years into the future. So in the years ahead, we'll be retiring these bonds, and I hope you take a moment, remember, these were Bob's bonds, so he served us well, so thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I didn't know you had someone with you, Michael. That was unexpected.
I don't have to talk, I just, maybe that was Bob.
All right, well, moving on from that, we have consent items. We have motion and a second on our consent items, further discussion, if not, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And our consent items.
Yes.
Are approved by a vote of five to zero, Rick.
All right, mayor and council, my pleasure to introduce is the right word, maybe reintroduce, reacquaint everyone with our new Assistant Chief Fire Marshal Blake Boyle. A little bit about Blake, he's actually been with the city since 2014 in a variety of part-time and full-time capacities with the fire department. A couple of years ago, he had the opportunity for a promotional and career development opportunity to go to the city of Windsor Heights and serve as a captain at the fire department, which is in their system, the number two. And with Chief McCluskey moving to Waukees, the last few months, Blake has served as the interim fire chief. So it was a wonderful career opportunity, development opportunity for him. He also has experience as a paramedic with West Des Moines EMS in his hometown of Earlham. He's been a volunteer, continues to be a very active volunteer out there, and he's done that since 2010. He has an associate's degree in fire science from Waldorf, and he's working on his bachelor's degree in fire administration with a concentration in fire investigation and should have that by the end of 2023. One of the things that kind of displays Blake's commitment and passion and self-development and his contributions to the profession. Just in the past five years, he's achieved instructor one, fire officer one, fire officer two, fire inspector one, fire investigator one, he's also a CPR instructor. So just kind of his passion and energy and things are that we're looking forward to, and we're excited to have him a part of the time, full time again with the fire department.
Welcome Blake, what would you like to say?
Nothing, I just thank you all for this opportunity, I'm looking forward to getting back to the city of Clive full time, I love it here. And just looking forward to help shape the future of Clive.
Welcome.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move from there to our action items. The first, we have a public hearing on the Clive urban renewal area, did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor, this was published in the Des Moines Register on March 15, 2023.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, good evening, Matthew, would you do the doc cam for me? So tonight, we actually have several actions in front of you. The first would be the public hearing and then hopefully approval of the amendment to the Clive Urban Renewal Plan. The second would be an approval for an ordinance for a Dallas County TIF area. And the third would be approval of an ordinance for a Polk County TIF area. So the urban renewal plan is a document that the city has updated, I think this is the 17th or 18th time it was originally adopted in 1991. The city did have a few other urban renewal plans in the early 2000s and previous to that that are no longer relevant. So this is our kind of last remaining urban renewal plan. You can see the map here, everything that's kind of that beige-y yellow color is already in the Clive Urban Renewal Area. And the pink is what's proposed to be added with this amendment. So we'll start with the area first, the appendices to the urban renewal plan. And the first one, just correct some Scrivener's errors from the 2018 edition. This was what bond council had recommended, so we could document those errors, but it wasn't necessary with the nature of what they are. The Scrivener's errors are minor, they did not feel it was necessary to rescind and then re-adopt that just documenting those variations was sufficient legally. So that's that first very lengthy legal description. The second legal description that's included actually adds the pink areas back in or in. So the first area there that's being re-added was the Emerald Isle area, right up here. That was previously in, and then we didn't realize the development over there that we expected when that was initially established. So that 20, 21-year clock ran out on that area. And now we are finally starting to have that redevelopment there. So we had removed that and we added it back with this action, would re-add it back in. And that would allow the city to capture those funds or spend funds in that area, not capture, capture would be the TIF, excuse me. And that would then allow funds to be spent in that area on the public improvements that are identified in the the plan. And then you can see the other new area added is this Boston Commons Office Park area up by the Schuler Pond, which is one of the areas identified in the Northwest Parks Planning as a future project. And then mostly bits of public right-of-way that will have projects, street projects identified to use some of those urban renewal funds that are collected. There are a couple other properties being added. First one right here is on the corner of 111th and Hickman, that was formerly Carve City West. Now that they have closed that location and relocated, we do anticipate there is likely to be a redevelopment project on that site. And since it is contiguous and will have some public improvements in that area, we're proposing to include that here. And the other two are the Wittern Group slash Fond Engineering Property and European Flavors. Those are two properties that were covered in those previous urban renewal plans I mentioned that are no longer effective. So the previous addition that brought in the whole 86th Street area excluded those parcels because they were covered in a different plan. They are no longer covered by that plan because it is irrelevant, so we are just making sure we capture them here with our University Boulevard flood mitigation, the 86th Street Neighborhood Projects that could be forthcoming. We just wanted to make sure that those got included this time. So nothing currently proposed on those, just filling in those holes in the area since they're no longer really covered. And then the projects generally that are added, there's four categories, one is proposed to be new. The three existing categories were streets, parks, and stormwater projects. Those largely align with the projects that are identified in the CIP and other strategic planning conversations, just explicitly says what they are, so we can use these funds towards them. The other category that is new is for facilities and buildings. That's been proposed to be added, and it would then allow TIF funds collected to be spent within the urban renewal area on public, like city-owned, vertical improvements. So the projects that have been specifically identified as being eligible within the urban renewal plan for that would be the Harbach Center, the Green Belt Landing Project that would be vertical, the Porter and Laney and Park shelters. And then a city hall remodel at some point would be on the table that could streamline service delivery and meet changing staff needs. So that would be the new addition of project type category to be added in tonight. And then staff did hold the required taxing entities consultation meeting. We did not get any attendance at that or any questions or comments that came in from those entities. So we would recommend approval of the urban renewal plan amendment tonight. And then if you would like, I will go ahead and give the blurb on the two TIF ordinances. So once the urban renewal area and plan amendment is approved, there are the two ordinances proposed that would authorize the division of taxes levied on taxable property. There's one for Polk County, one for Dallas County, as I'd said. And then each year, that TIF fund can be used to pay for future projects in the urban renewal area. So those areas that were called out specifically would include the Emerald Isle area as well as the property at 111th and Hickman Road is being included in that for the Polk County side as well. I think Liz, did that cover all of them? Yes.
Questions for Amanda?
Move to close the public hearing.
The motion is second, close the public hearing, further discussion. Hearing done, would council please vote? And would clerk please post vote once it's available? So that passes by a vote of five to zero, close the public hearing, now we move on to the resolution.
The resolution, clerk, I'm sorry. Move the resolution to declare necessity, Sabbs Urban Renewal Area pursuant to section 403.4 of the Code of Iowa and approve urban renewal plan amendment, the Clive Urban Renewal Area.
The motion is second on the resolution, further discussion.
Can I just get a clarification on a few things, and I can go one at a time on B and C or do it all at once with A? But for some folks that are, you know, whether listening or for my benefit, there's a lot of talk about TIF in the legislator legislation, you know, dealing with TIF and urban renewal. And the pros and cons of some of these entities you're talking about, yeah, we held a public meeting. But can you just kind of briefly just talk about what are the cons against an entity being in this TIF district or urban renewal district like the Wittern Group and a few of the others?
So being included in the urban renewal plan area doesn't immediately do anything to those properties. So nothing has changed just by them being included. The TIF ordinance is what would actually start impacting how those taxes are collected. And I will have to defer to either Liz or Matt to kind of get into the politics of that a little more.
Yeah, the, yeah, it's definitely two separate components. The the plan is basically outlining what is the city allowed to do in its urban renewal area. And the TIF ordinances themselves allow for the capture of any increment value, there still needs to be a project, there still needs to be something happening. So the urban renewal, or excuse me, the Emerald Isle area is a great example. So the the bank project that's on the corner right now, as we talk about, and we also have now some more perspective development that we're talking about right now at a staff level east of that bank. There's going to be the need to improve Emerald Isle Drive, put in the public improvements for a city-level street, it's still a rural kind of cross-section of an old asphalt road, stormwater improvements, and so now with having these parcels in there, we're able to determine, okay, if we identify a million-dollar project to do all of these improvements, now we can capture the increment from that new value of that bank going from, let's say, half a million dollars worth of assessed value to 5 million. Capture that increment because that property is specifically benefiting from those improvements to pay for it rather than the broader tax base of the community. So the TIF ordinances is what accomplishes that. And it's because Clive is crosses two counties, we have to do it by county because the Dallas County Auditor has to track it on their side, and the whole county auditors by law is required to track it on their side. But that is kind of the functionality of the two, where the TIF, the ordinances are capturing the revenue is really the revenue side. And the plan is what can the expenses, what can be the expenditure side of the ledger if that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think for the sake of all of us, that really the TIF doesn't change the dollars being collected, it's just the direction. It's another tool in our belt to say that that money can be spent, you know, in the urban renewal area in the TIF. We're not increasing taxes on any one of those entities, so there's no difference to those entities, correct?
Correct, correct. And I would argue it's a more efficient policy for the city because you're directing, again, the resources of who's benefiting from that infrastructure. You're taking the value from who's benefiting from it to pay for said infrastructure that is directly adjacent. You may have some cases where you have a roadway that may be bringing folks from a little bit further away. But for the most part of what we have laid out in our CIP, whether it's traffic signalization, like in front of Fairway or roadway improvement, Emerald Isle Drive is another example, and then eventually maybe the Hickman Interchange. These are improvements that are directly benefiting these properties.
And then one last thing, you mentioned something about adding to the urban renewal language, streamlining for staff, something, I can't remember what was read.
It was the city hall, the city hall renovation, so that is what we put in the ordinance or the plan language is city hall renovations, as we've talked about, we talked about last November, to look at more secure and efficient space for this facility, even this room as well in terms of this being a long-term home for Clive kind of city hall library services.
Thank you, councilor. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would council please vote? So the resolution of necessity passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1129, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Motion is second on the proposed ordinance 1129, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that first reading passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number 1130, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
The motion is second on ordinance 1130, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero, first reading on both of those. Next item is a public hearing on proposed resolution of necessity on Hickman Road, Jim. And did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, and for this particular one, it published March 8, 2023, and again, March 16, 2023, in the Des Moines Register per Iowa law.
Thank you, Matthew. Jim.
Thank you, mayor, we're revisiting a project tonight that we first started discussing a month ago for some improvements at Hickman Road and 161st Street. We will be installing traffic signals and making some median modifications out there yet this construction season. There is a special assessment associated with the project with 25% of the total project cost being assigned to each quadrant of the intersection. As we discussed a month ago, the two development properties in the northeast and southeast quadrant of the intersection will be included in that assessment. We're looking to approve the resolution of necessity tonight to complete that preliminary portion of the process. Your actions tonight will also set a public hearing for your second meeting in April where we receive bids and hopefully award a contract for the work to be completed. There's a letting of April 18 scheduled. So without it, we have to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim.
Jim, did I see that was 20, 25% Waukees and 75% Clive, what was the breakdown on that again?
Yeah, the southwest quadrant is within Waukees city limits. We did assign, then we took that into account and looked at the total project cost spread across all four quadrants. We did not include the northwest quadrant because of the residential nature, so that left the two developmental properties.
Other questions, if.
Move the club with some public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close public hearing, further discussion, if not, would council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And the vote to close public hearing passes by a vote of five to zero, we're skipping item A unless there is a reason to amend the resolution of necessity. If not, we'll go to B and just.
Move all together, B, C, and D, or one at a time?
One at a time.
Move the resolution of necessity.
Second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote on the resolution of necessity? And will clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Next, we have the plans and specs.
Move C.
Second.
Motion and a second, further discussion.
It's legal.
It's legal, yeah, it's recommended, actually. We duly made notes, Michael. Would the council please vote and would clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five to zero. Move D.
Second.
Motion and a second, approve D, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will clerk please post that vote? And that also passes by a vote of five to zero, thank you, Jim. Next, we're going to talk about flood preparedness.
We were on a quick move and then you called Doug.
We were on a roll.
We were going quick. Then the word Doug came up.
I'll do my best here. We do want to take a few minutes as we kind of get into this part of the calendar year to start worrying about what might happen along Walnut Creek. So you know that we spend quite a bit of time throughout the year working on flood preparedness, flood mitigation. But we want to take the time, again, as we kind of come into the spring season, as we start doing some of our communication and notifications to property owners, to just take a minute to pause, reflect on what we've done over the last 12 months and talk about some of the things that we anticipate seeing as it relates to flood preparedness for the city of Clive this year. So I start with this, this is what, again, I keep in the back of my mind, year in and year out. This is simply. This is simply the, uh, record of water elevation at the seventy, seventy-third street USGS gauge station. And the, the only thing that I really pay attention to is how many times you see a little bar start crossing one of those horizontal lines. And for the city of Clive over the last, let's just say twenty years, you see one of those bars crossing a horizontal line about every third or fourth year. Uh, the last flood that we had of any significance was two thousand and eighteen, which I'll do the math for you, is five. So, um, the anxiety of, um, the possibility is certainly ramping up. Although there is no, nothing to suggest from the, the climate, uh, predictions and the other folks that are in that space to suggest that we have a higher than normal chance of, of a flood event along Walnut Creek. It's similar to, uh, uh, years past. So again, we'll cross our fingers and hope that we don't have a bar that crosses the horizontal line. But in the event that we do, uh, we, we, uh, want to make sure that folks are, are prepared and able to manage, uh, those impacts. And speaking of those impacts, uh, just a reminder that, um, about seventeen or eighteen percent of our community is located in a special flood hazard area. So there are flood risk, uh, for any of those properties within that blue or purple area within the city. Uh, it does represent about two hundred and fifty-five insurable buildings. So, um, if we see a hundred-year rain event on Walnut Creek, similar to what happened in the Four Mile Creek area uh, in two thousand and eighteen, that is going to be what it looks like. So there's two hundred and fifty-five properties with some measure of risk uh, from our analysis that we've been able to work through with the Corps of Engineers and with the state, about half of the properties, so about a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and thirty, um, have the possibility of being more than fifty percent damaged if that flood shows up. Uh, that will be significant for the city of Clive and for the property owners that are dealing with that. So that's, um, again, just kind of the reminder of why we have to be continually diligent on flood mitigation and flood preparedness. The other part that I like to just bring up for folks as a reminder, that is the Walnut Creek watershed. City of Clive is kind of, uh, in the middle, if you will, and, and on the downstream side of, of the watershed itself. About ninety-two percent of the watershed drains through the city of Clive. We're only about ten percent of the land area within the Walnut, Walnut Creek watershed. My point here is, um, that kind of the colored areas on this side of the little red line, so all of that area are our neighbors. And again, just reinforcing the fact of why we need to continue to build partnerships and relationships with those people that are above us in the watershed is critically important. Everything they do has an immediate impact on what we will have to experience or deal with, uh, if a large rain event comes. So now that we kind of know what we might get ourselves into, uh, some of the preparedness activities that we'll be, uh, working on, we will have a flood disaster tabletop drill next week. We do that annually as a, uh, internal staff, uh, development effort where we, uh, have a scenario related to some type of flood event. We work through all of the planning that's associated with, uh, the response to that flood event. Uh, work through that with our teams and then make sure that, um, it's coordinated and then also addressing any concerns that, uh, might pop up. Each year, we kind of learn something new and are able to adjust and, and make the plan better. So that's going to occur next week. Uh, Fire Department is the, uh, the, uh, leader of that activity. And Chief Rowe will come back to you next month to kind of give you an after-action report on, on the activity. And then ultimately, uh, ask for your consideration for the annual update to the flood response plan. So that's, uh, again, going to be coming up here very quickly. We will also be doing some community outreach and, and, uh, uh, conversations both broadly within the watershed. Uh, as I included in your material, we have a annual be flood ready, a newsletter that goes out to all two hundred and fifty-six of those property owners within the floodplain, trying to give them an idea, uh, again, just a refresher of making sure that they're taking the actions necessary to get themselves prepared in the event of a flood. Uh, the highlight for this year was really trying to make sure that folks took advantage of the opportunity to get connected with the Alert Iowa system, which is critically important for the community to be able to communicate to those property owners that have flood risk, uh, so that they know that a flood may be coming or when the flood does come, what are the instructions that they need to follow? Being connected with that system allows us to get short messages out to them directly to their phones. That is one of our, um, more significant ways of getting communication out in those emergency situations. So, um, again, to the degree that you have friends or neighbors, uh, in, in the watershed that have flood risk, encouraging them to get signed up, uh, to that Alert Iowa system, which is the replacement to code red, uh, would certainly be encouraged. Uh, the other kind of big item that we continue to work on is, uh, obviously the University Boulevard flood mitigation planning and specifically the flood buyout program. At this point, uh, the city has acquired eighteen properties in that area, uh, which is a really impressive feat, in my opinion, uh, since we started this in, uh, basically the end of two thousand and eighteen. Uh, at this point, uh, as I said, we've got, uh, fourteen properties acquired and demoed. Uh, we do have four that are in, on the books right now in terms of, uh, they've been acquired and are just getting scheduled for demolition later this year. As we move forward, uh, on the residential standpoint, we will be having again, some outreach meetings to this neighborhood group by next month. But I already know I have a couple of residential property owners that are, uh, ready to make that transition out of the space. So the funding that you have, uh, provided in the capital improvement plan again for next year, I fully anticipate being able to, to leverage that completely. Uh, beyond the residential, um, we do currently have, uh, grant applications in place with FEMA, just waiting to hear back on, on the award of those, uh, to support two commercial properties being acquired. Uh, and then we have a, another separate application for one additional commercial property. So in theory, if we are successful with our grants, uh, we could see four residential properties demolished, three, uh, commercial properties acquired and turned into green space. Uh, we also have, uh, a technical assistance grant that's being considered by FEMA at this point. And as you'll recall, uh, the work we've done to this point really has memorialized the need for the buyout program in terms of sustainability for this space long-term. But what we don't have good answers to is, uh, once that area is removed in terms of its flood risk, what is the next evolution of the landscape in the community? So if we are able to, uh, obtain the, uh, the resources to that grant, we'll be able to dial in more specifically and in terms of how do we transition this area into that natural floodplain function space that supports both the community needs in terms of the green belt uh, and supports hopefully that next evolution of development, uh, in this neighborhood area as well. So, um, again, fingers crossed that we'll be able to, uh, to, um, have a successful award on that and then we'll get started, uh, with that project, um, next fall, winter. The, uh, last piece that I put in front of you, uh, isn't very exciting, but this is, uh, a, a list of projects associated with hazard mitigation uh, that we review on an annual basis. In this case, uh, we're not suggesting any new projects. They're mostly continuation of projects like the buyout area, uh, like the flood planning, like the communication pieces, things of that nature. So we don't see any new projects necessarily being, um, required in terms of this plan effort. But what I do want to bring your attention to is this plan is now coming up to its fifth year and it's time to update the Polk County multi-hazard, uh, plan. Uh, the county emergency management, uh, services is in the process of soliciting consultants to complete that planning process. Uh, it is a extremely important process for us, uh, because it allows for project identification. And, uh, in order to have, uh, opportunities for grant funding, the projects must be on this list. The plan process involves a lot more than simply identifying projects on a list, but that's the most important thing for me at this moment is to make sure that that list is good and solid and able to be, uh, leveraged for, for funding applications. The process itself will probably be about six or seven months in length. Um, and again, I tried to highlight that, uh, although staff will certainly be involved, having participation from the elected officials, um, as well as our boards and commission and residents is, uh, going to be extremely important in that process as well. So again, don't need, uh, anybody to commit tonight, but we will be asking for, uh, folks to participate as we know the schedule of that planning process. The last thing I wanted to, uh, bring up to your attention, um, we talked about this last year with the CRS program that the city is involved with. Uh, for the last five years, the community has benefited from the actions of the city to be good floodplain managers. And that has resulted in substantial savings of the flood premiums that property owners have to pay for their flood insurance. There was some concern last year, uh, about the city's ability to continue on that program because of some prerequisite changes that were being made. We went through that process, uh, the city made its decisions. And ultimately, the submittal we made for, uh, the CRS at the end of two thousand and twenty-two was, um, a lower class than what we had previously been. Uh, so that would have reduced the discounts available to the property owners. Interestingly, about a month ago, um, as CRS started to process the application that we submitted, um, again, I do not have the specifics of why yet, uh, but we did receive a call saying we really don't want Clive to get, uh, uh, reduced from its current status. Uh, city's doing good things. We want to continue to support the city's efforts that way. Uh, so they had indicated that if we could turn around our application in about thirty days um, and demonstrate that we're able to, uh, meet the credits to keep our class five certification, that they were willing to allow that to happen. So, um, at this point, the light at the end of the tunnel of making that application is fairly bright. Uh, and I am anticipating hopefully by Monday to have a complete application in place. Uh, we will certainly have the requisite points to maintain our class five status. Once we get that formally submitted, it'll be reviewed. We'll, we'll go back and forth on a few things, but I would anticipate that within about three months' time, uh, we'll have certification that the city is able to maintain its class five status, which results in, um, uh, about twenty-five percent flood insurance premium discount to our residents, which is about, uh, it depends year to year, but somewhere between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars of savings to Clive property owners. So very excited about that, um, and, uh, look forward to uh, potentially moving up that class status, uh, at least one more bracket and providing some additional discounts, um, once we get through this process. So that's, uh, kind of the whirlwind of the activities, uh, both from the last year and some of the work that we anticipate doing, uh, over the next twelve months.
So to that point that you were just making at the end there, so with that, with maintaining that class status this year, assuming we, you know, we're able to do that back and forth, are we back, are we back in the same position next year or, or I guess?
So, so that's, um, a little bit of the, I don't know the answer yet, um, because I didn't have time to, to care. All I had time to do is deliver the application so that we can keep our class five. I do not believe, uh, from the communications that I've had with FEMA that there's any intent to pull the rug out. Um, but no one could give me real clarity on what this exception is or what, what mechanism is being used to, to give us this exception. I, I don't know the answer to that. So it's, it's possible that it could be a problem in the future.
Questions or comments?
Yes.
Well, congratulations. I think it says a lot that they recognize what the city has done and it's in great part due to you. So that's wonderful news. I do have a question about Polk County.
Sure.
When we first started our process of the buyouts, we were kind of incented with Bob Brownell coming in and saying that we could have some seed money from the county and they've helped along the way at times. Is there any prospect of that continuing? And do we need to have a conversation with our new supervisor or has that already happened?
Um, I, I would say that it would certainly be worth continuing to have conversations, um, particularly as we transition from simply removing the flood risk, the buyout part to that next thing, that next thing meaning something that is providing fairly dramatic community-wide benefit, county-wide benefit, if we can, uh, continue to expand the, the utilization of that green belt to also take those spaces and turn them into, uh, flood storage, for example. There's other people that are benefiting beyond the city itself. So I certainly think that there are opportunities for partnerships, whether or not that's the county, uh, other nonprofits, NGOs, um, anybody and everybody that we can, can talk with, uh, I would certainly encourage it.
Thanks.
Yes, go ahead.
Doug, on the flood prone buyout plan, any movement or interest from some of those businesses that are very near there, the, was it the McGoi, there's, uh, some of the small businesses right in there, um, any movement on them to want to, uh, uh, want to participate in this program?
Yeah, as I said, um, uh, again, subject to, uh, FEMA's determination of our applications, we do anticipate three commercial properties. Uh, they have identified their willingness and now it's just a matter again of getting the money from FEMA to, um, uh, actually complete the acquisition. So yes, there is absolutely interest. Uh, there continues to be other commercial property owners that, um, I continue to have dialogue with. Um, some of them are long-term plays. We're not quite interested, but we also understand our flood risk. Uh, there are some proper, commercial property owners that are still in that position of, we understand our flood risk, we'd really like to get out of here, but, um, finding a new building in this environment that we can afford is very challenging.
Right.
Um, and then there are some that are again, just kind of waiting out their leases, for example, or, or other things. So, uh, we continue to have very good conversations with a lot of the commercial property owners. And again, I would fully anticipate that, um, if we keep up those relationships, we're all now kind of sharing a same end game, if you will. Uh, we understand the risk. We understand that, uh, we have to be very strategic, very savvy in how we implement this. Um, and I think there are those opportunities. I think we're demonstrating that, uh, there are those opportunities for win-wins, uh, with these property owners. So each time we, we complete a project and are successful with it, um, you know, again, I think it will continue to kind of snowball down the road here and hopefully we'll get it done in the next seven or eight years.
Any other questions or comments?
Grant, I would just say credit to Doug and Amanda and the rest of the team on a lot of work, a lot of work that they've been doing in the last month. The CRS thing kind of threw us for a loop. Um, and the work that, you know, happened last year, as we all remember in this council chamber is related to the Indian Hills conversation, which again, I'm grateful for FEMA's, uh, opening here, but also a bit, I'll be honest, a bit frustrated because we wouldn't have gone through what we went through last year. So I want to make sure to recognize that staff have done a lot of, uh, work and we've done a lot of lifting around this table on some of these questions, but again, happy, but to, uh, Councilmember McElany's point, we'd really love to have that documented, that exemption and try to figure out a way to secure that for the future. So we're not in that situation again. Um, and, and appreciate the recognition by FEMA that, you know, Clive is a leader in the state of Iowa in the CRS program and we want to continue to be that and they're allowing us to do so, so. In the CRS program and we want to continue to be that and they're allowing us to do so. So. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Good job, Doug.
Thank you.
Matt, tell us about city performance pay.
All right. Let me switch the settings. Yeah, you can flip it over now. All right. That's weird.
Yeah, don't duplicate them.
I didn't do that. I switched it the other way. Let me go back. There we go. Interesting how that worked there. All right, um, just a few slides for you to summarize a lot of information that um, we included uh, in the packet for you this evening to review. So. Really, uh, what you're going to hear tonight is the culmination of the work of a lot of people, a lot of committees, uh, council personnel committee, employee benefits committee. Your department, uh, head team, executive team, the HR team, myself. On things that we've been doing over pretty much the last year to uh, basically six to eight months. On uh, what started off with uh, work with a consultant on doing some market comparisons of our current pay ranges, our pay-for-performance matrix. Looking at our benefits, looking at a whole host of things in terms of how, how Clive competes in terms of this uh, workforce environment that we're in to both recruit. Uh, new employees and to retain them. Uh, and then what came along with that was a number of policy considerations, um, through discussions with you all during strategic planning, also with our uh, staff through employee surveys and focus groups. Really identifying some priority areas of uh, kind of retention and recruitment proposals that you'll see on kind of the back half of this presentation. And this is the prioritized uh, uh, items that came up, kind of the top priority items. The list is. Uh, longer than what you'll see tonight, but these are the ones that we felt in the short term, that I feel in the short term really will make a difference for us. Uh, in the organization. So going to dive in and, and we're going to start with the, the kind of pay compensation, the performance matrix components. So uh, one thing that's new this year, um, in this discussion is uh, essentially a compensation philosophy or a policy statement. This is more for you all as the, as the city council. Uh, that we've drafted and proposed and kind of gone through the wringer with both the. Employee benefits team, the personnel committee and the, and the executive team on what, how, how do we best state how we invest in our people here in Clive? And so what you saw in the packet uh, is that statement. And so we're trying to make sure we're identifying some of the key areas of how we're investing in our people. What kind of workforce we're looking to attract for the community. Um, and really kind of our service approach to everything that we do as an organization. So. And this is something new and something that I would like to have this city council consider as a policy statement that you adopt. And ever, all the rest of the proposals that you see here really feed off of that policy statement. So hopefully what you see. If everything's connected together, how we were trying to intend is you see those connections back to that policy statement. So um, again, what I would like to do tonight, just because there's a lot of components, is kind of pause at those components and see if there's questions, comments. Uh, things that jumped out and of course, the personnel committee was involved in this conversation. If there's any statements they would like to make. But happy to kind of jump in as we go through each one of these components. Any comments on that, um, how we invest in our people statement? All right. So uh, with the pay ranges, so this is where uh, Beth Tatarco with the Austin Peters group did the market analysis. Looked at a couple of different combinations of our uh, the six current, six comparison cities that we've been using for a number of years. Um, also some other kinds of combinations of other cities just outside of the Des Moines metro market, some other combination of some cities within the Des Moines metro market. And what we came to is the core six cities that we've been using is really an appropriate. View of our market in terms of the employees that we're competing for, for our workforce here in Clive. And so the proposal is to maintain those six metro cities that you see on the screen. Uh, the chain, one of the, a couple of the changes with the pay ranges though, is we did have some that uh, the entry level range. Uh, for the position does need to move up and this does happen about every year when we review a pay ranges. There's just a little, a few more this year than normal. And the big recommendation from, from Beth and her group is. For the Clive to have wider ranges than we have today. So right now we have a little bit tighter from the men, the entry level to the maximum. Then a lot of our competing communities do. What um, she was recommending and what you're seeing in those attached documents is a wider range. So there's a hi- uh, higher top end. Uh, potential for somebody in a position to grow into over time. So that was some, and it was kind of stepping it up over time. We didn't want to go too far too fast. And so what you see in there is every, every one of the pay range positions, the top end is moving up. And then there's only certain positions, not every one of them where the minimum entry is moving up because there's some where it actually stays the same as what we had today. So that was part of that market comparison. Also in that uh, particular document, we highlighted a couple of job descriptions. These would be uh. Updated or new job descriptions that we need to create. Some of this would be reclassifications of existing employees into new positions. Part of this study work or this market work is, was also an internal equity study. That was done where Beth and her team also interviewed our staff and evaluated our job descriptions and tried to get a flavor of what that person is really doing and their level of responsibilities on. On a number of different criteria and offered some recommendations, uh, not a lot, but a few in terms of reclassifications. Uh, that we should consider in terms of what that person is really doing and how, then she was comparing them to the market communities to be consistent. Uh, also what you see in those highlighted uh, job descriptions are some new ones. So we talked about the deputy city clerk as a new promotional opportunity in the budget and then the communication specialist position. So you see highlighted ones there. Um, those would be ones where we would have to create new job descriptions. Also the police captain is another one where. We were finding that our number two in the police department is really being compared in terms of uh, his duties and responsibilities. To police captains in our neighboring agencies. And so we're trying to reflect that uh, in the job descriptions. Those, that would be an example of something that isn't an automatic reclassification or promotion because it's a civil service position. So there's process that needs to happen for a position like that in the police department. But again, this pay range document reflects that. So that's why you see, for example, in that position zero, nobody in the position because we're not. It's not an automatic thing for that position.
Matt, out of those six cities on that one of your uh, comparison, how many of those cities have police captains?
Um, at the top of my head. Chief, you might be better. I think all of them do. Maybe Eltuna might not be, not be the only one that doesn't. I know West Des Moines, Urban Dale and Ankeny have captains. John's. I think all of them. Eltuna would be the only one that I'm not sure on, but I think all of them do. So yeah, there is some situations though where we don't have the same, like the position each city doesn't have exactly. This, it's more of, we look at the duties and see which ones comparable, but I'm pretty sure all of them have a police captain. I can, I'll verify that though.
Yeah, and, and I'm only keen on that one because sometimes on the comparisons, right, you look at a Clive versus a West Des Moines. Hmm, population and size is significantly different, including Clive versus Ankeny, Clive versus Urban Dale. The size alone is such a.
Right. And so that's where the key is, is we're also looking, we're looking at the duties to make sure, is you might have it where one community may call it an assistant chief. And it might really operate like a police captain. So we're, we're going based off the job descriptions and the duties, not always just the title. So I'll give you like, uh, because we all title, we all, some, some of us title our positions a little bit differently. Like we have operations specialists. They might title it a different way in Urban Dale or another community, but we're looking at the duties and doing that work. We used to do that work every year. What we're proposing with these new pay ranges is we kind of doing, we did a full review this time around. And then instead of doing it every year, we may do it at least initially here, maybe a third or fourth year away and then eventually get to maybe an every five-year cycle. And then what we would do with these pay ranges is they, all these pay ranges would move by the CPI every year. So then we are keeping pace. But we're not proposing to do that review every year unless we have maybe a new position where we need to kind of figure out where it falls in the, in the pay ranges. Good question though. Um, also, one thing that is new here as well is historically, we've never, we haven't shown the part-time positions on our pay ranges. We've had a separate. Pay range document that you all approved for part-time positions. We didn't think that made a whole lot of sense. We wanted to include them, all the positions together because we do, we did need to do some catch-up, particularly for uh, part-time positions. I know if you've been looking at your agendas over the last six months, you've seen a lot of. Part-time, particularly part-time library positions that we've been hiring for, and that's because we've had a really hard retention issue with that. And so we wanted to um, have it actually on this pay range document. Reflecting that when we get to the pay-for-performance met- uh, matrix and the performance evaluation process. That we're going to be treating them all the same. Uh, to be consistent across the board. And it's a different, obviously clearly a different pay range level. But being consistent with our part-time staff as well as our first full-time staff in terms of going through full performance evaluation processes, just like the full-time staff do. And being open to merit raises, just like the full-time staff, again, at a different scale, of course, but definitely still recognizing that on this pay range document. And then as I mentioned it, uh, just a minute ago, that we would adjust these ranges annually by the CPI. The same CPI that we'd use for the pay matrix. Would shift, would shift these ranges once a year. And it would have that same cap that I'll talk about with the pain matrix here on the next slide of one percent floor, three percent ceiling. And, but we are proposing, as we've talked about at the personnel committee, and I mentioned in the memo that for, again, for this year. And we've incorporated into the budget, the proposed budget is exceeding that three percent ceiling for, to four percent, again, because of the. An ordinary inflationary environment that we've been in in the last two years. The last point on this slide is there's also a draft policy in there for how we handle our annual merit salary adjustments. A lot of what you see in that document is timing. When is somebody hired? When would they be eligible for merit and how's it prorated? We really wanted, we've, we've been kind of, we've been doing it this way, but we really want to make sure we get it properly documented and be accurate with it. And that would also be. Kind of like you do for financial policies. This would be something that would be adopted as a policy that we can rely upon. Again, making sure we're putting po- uh, practice into policy. Questions or comments on the pay ranges before I move on to the matrix? Of course, these are all interconnected, but I know it's a lot of information. Okay. Yeah.
I have one maybe for you in the personnel committee.
Yeah.
Included on the range and the four percent CPI request. I get it, it's reasonable. Um, but have we ever thought about hitting it with a, like, your three percent cap with a one-time pu- payment of to catch up? You know, y- you do have that slide of the CPI and inflation and kind of where we're headed today.
Mm-hmm.
At least in my opinion, where we're headed today in the next year or two, right, of uh, inflation recession, bringing everything back kind of.
Mm-hmm.
Workforce is now coming back.
Um.
And you pay them a one-time rather than the four percent or five percent, which then takes. Is a multiplier every year, right? Because you've already paid it out at four or five percent.
Mm-hmm. Oh, like on top of, on top of, it would be more of like a. Incentive bonus payment versus actually being incorporated into the base wage. Now that, I mean, that's something, that's something that could be considered. I'm not necessarily advocating for that as I still think.
Nor am I. I, I mean.
I just, I think it's something you can consider though.
Number wise and what benefits it means. Sometimes that one-time payment today will.
Right.
Yeah, it's a good. I brought that up at the personnel committee that this is baked in going forward and it's for the last two years, right? So, um. It's a good point. I think if, if, if we get there, we did not talk about that as an option. Um, but I think if we're, if we're looking at similar circumstances next year, that, that might be something we need to discuss.
Yeah.
Good.
Well, and it gets them money quicker too, for what happened in the last two years. Now you're paying them to catch up for the next year or two, but you're giving them that chunk.
Right, and that.
Up front where it gets them cash in their pocket instead of.
At the time when the inflation, they're, yeah, for example, experiencing the higher inflation. One drawback to our, our system as we look at October. CPI for the next year. So I would argue when we did it in twenty, uh, last year, we were probably a year behind. For when they were, uh, all of us were experiencing high inflation. The pay increase came a year later. Uh, because we use that and the reason we do it in October is for budgeting purposes. We don't, it doesn't get reported until November. And then the finance staff come ask me, okay, Matt, here was the CPI. How are we going to put the number in the budget in December to present to the council in January?
And that's why sometimes that cash payment then catches them up for that year lag or two.
So you don't necessarily have to wait, you know, that's something that, yeah, that's something definitely to think about.
Four or five percent, but anyways.
Do you keep a reserve in your current year to do that versus then waiting? Yeah. Yeah, definitely something to think about.
I think it assists on both sides. The multiplier's not there and the cash is in the pocket.
Right, right. Oh, that's a good point. So the matrix side of this, um, this is different. Again, in your packet, I included the current matrix versus this proposed one. So uh, some changes here. We're, we're consult, we're, we're consolidating it down from basically seven categories and rows or columns and rows to. Basically four and five. Um, still maintaining essentially the, the basics of our current matrix in terms of. Where the employee sits in their current wage range. So it's offering some. To retain newer employees who are typically in the early, will be in the lower part of the pay range, some incentive if they hit certain. Performance goals to have a higher increase early. Um, at the same point, still providing that incentive uh, on the, when folks get to the higher part of the pay range. One thing to note here is we're really changing, and this is the performance evaluation tie, pretty completely how we're doing performance evaluations. I'm not showing a numbered system here. There is numbers that gets you to exceptional year, great year, good year. But it's really going a different way uh, on this. It's still again numerically based. But it's showing, especially when you look at exceptional year and an even year, a, a pretty big one percentage point difference. So it's really saying, okay, if you had an exceptional year, we really want to stand that out versus a good year, a great year. So if I had to give you the basics and I, should we show the five-point scale in the, in the packet? A good year is somebody who's meeting the job description, meeting their job duties. And pretty much hitting, so they're doing, they're doing what they need to do. Then when you get to the great year, they're regularly exceeding those duties. They're, they're going above and beyond, but again, not. On uh, on a consistent, regular, all-the-time basis. Those, then you're getting to that exceptional year person. So with that, and then on, uneven year on the other side, might be somebody who kind of had an off year. You know, they haven't historically had performance issues, but we may have a situation where we have to recognize this last year. They struggled in some areas that we need to address. So they uh, were recognizing that where they're not getting the full CPI, they're getting a smaller merit raise. And then the improvement needed will be very rare, hopefully. I think in our organization, it's historically been very, very rare. And this is somebody who. Has got, we've got some serious concerns, is probably on a performance improvement plan to, to, to get things done. We're not going to entertain a, a wage increase in those situations. So um, again, this is all connected to the pay range. That we just talked about with the current wage position, just like our current matrix. And then the performance evaluation piece, which I'll talk about in the minute, in a minute, that really puts kind of really. Changes how we do it, but also makes it more efficient and streamlined. And also I think more concentrated on the conversation between. The uh, manager supervisor and the employee really changing up. And we've also included that. Example of our current performance evaluation document in the packet. Um, one thing I will note too, with the CPI rate uh, range and the matrix uh, and the, and the merit pool that's shown on the screen, again, this is only. Uh, for non-union employees, um, we have incorporated this into the budget proposal that you have seen. So we have planned for it. Um, and it's uh, been incorporated. This would again, when we, when we bring back the formal document for, for your adoption. It'll have that one percent floor, three percent ceiling, like we talked about, all noted on there, adopted by council, just like you've done before with the previous matrix. You would still adopt this every year. So if. Tough financial situations or we decide we want to do a one-year thing and we want to modify a few things. Every year you have the chance to modify it, just like we do with the pay ranges and the pay matrix. That does not change in the process. Questions on this before we move to the performance evaluation tool? All right. So five-point scale, as I mentioned. Kind of already gave a, a little bit of a description of, of these different levels. This was a lot of work by Beth and the executive team. And the HR team to get to this point. We went back and forth uh, on this a lot and I think we've gotten this to a really good place. So the performance evaluation tool itself, really focusing on five key competencies that are equally weighted. Um, and are described in detail in the document and really focuses on a lot of questions that the manager needs to ask. About this employee on each of those uh, five competencies and then they would rate them on that five-point scale at each competency and then it's averaged. Uh, and then wherever that average rating is, is then where they fall on the pay matrix. Uh, one big streamline that we're looking at this year is moving this to an online tool. It's the perform module in our NeoGov system that we use for, uh, position recruiting, orientation, onboarding right now. It's been a great tool for us. We're looking to take advantage of that because what's nice about it, having it all interconnected in that system is a manager can then have the job description open for the position and all the components that are ready in NeoGov. It's all connected together. Streamlines it'll, uh, pretty good on the backend for the finance staff of when the reporting is put out for, after the evaluation process is done. Makes things, uh, quite a bit faster than, uh, and streamlined than what we've, uh, had historically in this process. Um, and really, one, one big point that I want to make is, we talked about this a lot. Particularly in the executive team group as we were working through is how do we turn this into more of a conversation? And not just going through 50 or 60 items like we have in the current tool where we're just checking boxes all the way through. How do we make it valuable for the manager and supervisor and for that employee who really wants to get that feedback? So that's why the questions, we're, we're switching to narratives and talking about commitments in each competency. Really trying to change the dialogue. And this will be a pretty massive training lift that we're willing to take on. And we're already starting to prepare some documentation to, because well, what I'm proposing is we're going right to this, this spring for the evaluation process. So we are going to be training on this in late April, early May with the managers and supervisors and all the staff. Doing the evaluations in May. And this is what would be based for what you would see in June for merit increases for staff.
Any, any thoughts on that training, including some sort of level setting or standardization so that you don't have one manager that is kind of treating, or maybe you're going to get to that.
Yes. Yes, that is actually a big part of what I, what we want to do with the training is to is to give examples, talk about how can we be consistent between managers. And one thing that, um, a little bit new too, that I'm looking for as a part of the process is certain rankings, particularly those exceptional basically one, twos and fives. Um, I also want to have myself have another layer of review on those. No matter where they're at in the organization, because those are key ones that we're going to have that I want to really make sure we're being consistent, right? Especially with the exceptional year where there is definitely that difference and merit increase. Are we being consistent across departments? Of who's truly fully exceeding. I want to make sure we're being careful about that, especially in these first couple of years, because it's something that's pretty new. But exactly to your point is trying to be consistent. Won't be a perfect science, especially we'll be learning a little bit this first year. But one thing I've shared with all the staff that we've, uh, that have seen this to this point is this is also up for tweaking. You know, we're going to try this change management, you know, we're going to evaluate it after we, uh, do this whole process. And if there's some tweaks that we need to make, one thing that we're going to do is I'm going to test that out on the department heads. And then over the next couple of weeks to try and recognize some things that we might want to modify in the training of what we see as we go through the process since we kind of created it. And see if it kind of turned out the way we thought it might, or the way I thought it might. Um, and then use that as a learning that we can include in the training for the rest of the managers and supervisors.
So I'm reading ahead a little bit, but the, the mid-year review focused on employee development.
So yeah, that is another important, um, change is we haven't, uh, historically, we've only had once a year, that April, May timeframe, one evaluation. There's two, a, a couple of big things that the NeoGov platform allows us to do, allows for journal entries throughout the year. So what does that mean? So a manager now can, uh, with the system, if they had something happen that day, that employee got recognized by a citizen on a great job that they did. They can make a quick journal entry that gets logged in the system. So they don't have to try to remember when they do the actual evaluation that, you know, how did that person do it? Or if there was a, a, a time where there was a learning opportunity that uh, something that they want to make sure to follow up with the employee on, they can make a journal entry. Also, what we're looking at is having a mid-year review at that six-month mark. So it'd be kind of a November timeframe. Where there is a, there's a, a, a catch-up on the commitments that were talked about in the annual review. How are you doing on your commitments, on your work competencies? We're primarily focused on development plans for the employees. So the NeoGov tool also allows us to create development plans. Not every employee is necessarily going to be interested in that. But there's definitely going to be a number that are. And so are we laying out, uh, development plans for one year, two-year, five-year? You know, maybe there's some training goals that the employee has, certain certifications or training opportunities they want to take a look at, or maybe they want to be in the best position for a promotion in five years when they know. You know, maybe their boss is going to be retiring and they, so laying out those development plans, having a different conversation at the mid-year point versus the evaluation conversation in that April, May timeframe.
But will, will there be a component of that mid-year where the manager can give some feedback about here's what I think you're trending toward, given what we've seen this year, just kind of giving a heads up to the person? And then on the flip side, does the, does the employee have the opportunity to say, you know, hey, here's the feedback that, that I'd like to give on this process, right? Especially during that first year or two that you were talking about.
Yes.
I think it'd be good to get some of that feedback, you know, from, from, you know, as, as broad a pool as you can get.
Right. Yeah. No, that is, that is what my goal is. Um, how we do that, whether it's the feedback comes in those individual meetings, or if we're doing some additional surveying after we do this for a year to give some anonymity to the staff to be able to provide some feedback. Um, that's definitely something. Again, part of the change management process that we want to look at. And then recognizing this is a pretty big change for both managers and employees, uh, that are being evaluated on how this process works. So we want to definitely learn through it. We're really excited about that mid-year component. And that was something that we heard a lot of, uh, both for managers and employees of wanting to have opportunities for those additional conversations. And for me, it's part of the training is going to be, you can have these conversations all the time on a regular basis, if you choose to. What we're going to do in this process with this tool is kind of force of, it's force a notification to say, hey, have you had your mid-year? Your mid-year conversation.
Will that be documented as like a journal entry then, or?
So there's a couple of ways. The development plans are a separate document. But there, it could be documented as a journal entry. That's the part we haven't fully flushed out what the mid-year review looks like yet. As we know, we have some time on that one. Uh, we've primarily been focused on the top half of testing out the, the April, May cycle first. But that's one thing we still need to flush out is what does that documentation look like for the mid-year review? Because I know there'll be employees who will be interested in saying, okay, how am I trending for six months from now? So do you start it? Can you start a draft of the next evaluation at that time or not? Or can the system allow us to do that? That's some things we still need to figure out. Any other questions on the evaluation tool? Right? So transitioning to the recruitment retention proposals. Again, staff appreciation recognition was a top priority of the council as well as the staff. Uh, we're trying some new things. Um, we've got feedback on that, you know, it's time to take a swing at some new things and we're definitely trying that. I know there was some discussion about how do we do more of a public event that is open, um, to staff and the public for doing staff appreciation and recognition? Well, Food Truck Friday is one of our most popular events and I think Councilmember Weaver brought this up during strategic planning. And we really liked it. And so we're looking at, at the end of that spring cycle. Of street, uh, Food Truck Friday events is actually having that staff appreciation event that'll start earlier for the staff. Probably four-ish o'clock before the public comes in around five. But it'll continue into the evening. And so we're planning to do some fun things and some different things. But then not just stopping there, having some quarterly events throughout the year at our different city facilities. That those departments would be kind of the hosts at that particular facility, all staff council would be invited. But they, that department hosting kind of has some flexibility and can have some fun with it of making, you know, theming it, making it their own. And so then we have some touch points throughout the year. Um, and having some flexibility in that. And also depending on the time of the day that they decide to do it, it could have some family involvement as well. But really not trying to overthink it and give, um, some opportunities for us to try out some new things. Really changing up the service awards, um, going, basically making it more of a, a one-on-one thing where I'm going to them throughout the year when they're hitting their anniversary on that recognition. We would still list off and read off the service year awards at the ma, at the major, uh, staff appreciation event. But the actual, um, recognition, one-on-one recognition would come throughout the year. We're spreading it out. Again, trying not to all load everything into that one event like we've historically done and trying to spread it out throughout the year. Also looking at bringing back some discounts that we've had previously. That was uh, and that was, uh, something that was definitely on me. That was one that we've had historically to allow employees to have a discount as a, for a season pass at the Aquatic Center. That was something that I felt needed to go away. And I didn't realize how valuable that truly was to staff retention and, and what staff really liked. And I think that's a, a low-hanging fruit that we can definitely pivot back to. And there was a comfort level in doing that. So again, bringing that back. So for a relatively small investment in the scale of our, of our organization and our budget, uh, doing some things that can really make a big impact. So that is, uh, what's that?
Timing.
Oh, on the, on the, the aquatics and recreation discount. So looking at, we weren't, we're a little too early or too late, I should say, to do it for this particular season. So we're looking at the 2024 aquatic season and recreation program. So we can give staff time to get that queued up in our systems to be able to do that. And be able to share the information on this. We didn't want to do it when season passes were already for sale. And if staff had already, you know, purchased one for their family, then they would miss out on it, you know, things like that. So we decided we'll, we'll, all of these policies that you see here would be effective from July 1 on as a part of our normal employee handbook update. So we kind of had to pick a line in the sand. So we're just going to say this is for the next fiscal year. Part-time staff benefits. Again, this was, some of it was reflecting, uh, making sure we accurately reflected in our policies. How we were handling the proration of benefits. And then looking at a few new ones related to some leaves that we weren't prorating for them, that full-timers were getting. And probably the biggest one is the years of service recognition. We've never recognized part-time staff and years of service. Uh, and any of our appreciation events, and that just didn't feel right to me. And just because, uh, somebody, a part-time employee has been here for 20 years, they should be treated like they've been here for 20 years, not 10 years. Prorated. So, um, that was a, is a big change is they should be included in the years of service recognition. And we, that's an equity issue that we just need to address, in my opinion. And that one actually has a full-out written draft policy that was included in your packet. That one, we're a little further along in the process on. So some of these are at different stages. These first two and the remote worker a little further along where we've got proposals and draft policies. And then the life event lead one at the end is when we're still, we're in the middle of working on right now.
Matt, on the food truck Friday event, um, are you planning on having the food trucks there at four early for the staff?
That would be our idea.
And are you going to have like a special designated area for everyone to be? Because what's going to happen is food trucks are going to show up and the public's going to just start showing up, right?
Yeah.
And so kind of intermingling with staff. And I don't know if that maybe is, that's okay. That's part of the point. I don't know. But I'm just thinking that if you've got food trucks there, people are going to show, right?
Right. People are going to show up early. We haven't talked through that contingency. So we have to think through that of whether we wait to start with the food at five, like we have staff over there at four. Cause we were, we've talked about doing some activities like a kickball game amongst staff or whatever on the softball field. So maybe we start off with those before we start with the food. And again, with the food is what we're planning on doing is is basically having vouchers for staff and their family to go to the food trucks. And we can control that. But that's an interesting point. Yeah. As soon, as soon as the food trucks are there, you might have people. But I do want the intermingling. I, to that point, that's exactly what we want. Cause we want to also during the breaks of the music have the mayor or myself recognize what this night is about with everybody there.
Question is just to be for you and the staff, right? To kind of recognize the staff. I, I don't know if you need signage or something, just like, you know, staff event or something.
We would have us, we would talk about actually having a separate area, setting some tents up to that in that west green space, west of the far west field. Is going over there. Because to make sure we have enough room and we're not taking up room that the public would be using, because we know that those events get pretty full. But actually setting up some separate tents that look different for the staff. And they'll be there right, uh, already. So they'll have taken up that area. So yeah, we are addressing that part.
One logistics point, the trucks already get set up well before five. And so that hasn't led to a huge flux of people coming in the way we've been doing them thus far. Yeah, I usually get there around five and they're usually there.
Shock. Well, but we were no parking spot.
The other thing is we always promote the start, start time, which hits right after work is getting over for most folks. And that's usually the driver for big audience.
For people to come down. Yep. So again, trying something new. And this is similar to the performance evaluation process. We're going to try some new things, maybe give it a year or two and then say, okay. You know, how, how's this feel? Is this, because again, with any of these things, you're not going to satisfy everybody, right? I don't think that's realistic, but what can we do that really strikes a nail on that we're doing something different and that we're enhancing it too at the same time? The, uh, last couple here, uh, remote work policy. This is one we really just never formalized anything when the pandemic hit us. We learned this on the fly pretty quickly. We figured out ways to do it. But now it's just recognizing this is, this is part of doing business as an employer now. Having these policies, having this available, but what are the, what are the guardrails of trying to do this? Then an organization, an organization like us where there's a small percentage that even can do remote work. The vast majority of our staff have to be present to deliver the service, but also recognizing as an employer for recruitment purposes. I have, I feel like you have to have this tool in the toolbox. You know, we have had situations where if we maybe would have had some more formal remote work, could it have changed something on an employee applying to us? We know that our competing communities, as we talked back at the six comparison communities are now formalizing or already have formalized some of these policies. But recognizing there's a balance we have to strike, right? There is. So the expectations, we're a service delivery organization. There's some expectations of, of, uh, our residents seeing somebody, you know, definitely talking to somebody on the phone. We can do all that with the technology on the the phone and, and virtual meetings, but also recognizing we don't want to create a burden on any employee who chooses to be present in the office and then their colleague is virtual. And is that putting an undue burden on that person who's present? We can't have that. That's not sustainable. So we try to in this policy, and we've had legal counsel also review this policy who's seen a lot more in the, in the employer workspace than we have. How do we strike that right balance and kind of create these agreements, the pilot period? Pilot program period to make sure that it's meeting the expectations of the manager and the, and the remote employee. And then also are we training our managers to know, to, to figure out how to manage a virtual environment situation? We've kind of, again, figured it out at Hawkly. But we need to do a better job just from a training perspective of our managers of giving them the tools to what are, you know, some of our folks have figured that out in, in terms of setting those expectations of making sure performance or checking in at certain times of the day. But what are some best practices that we can give managers to, to how do you manage a remote employee? And then having the exceptional situation of inclement weather and you know, if we shut in the library down, can we transition to a more remote work, you know, when we've had that in the winter? So trying to cover all those bases for that one.
I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of this one, but I think it's past us to make that decision. I think that is more of an operational decision for you, right? To, to put this policy in place. And so I'll leave it to you to try it out and pilot and all that. But I think the biggest piece to it is again, I think that pendulum is swinging and we're seeing it swing at many places, even major corporations swinging back to. Those days are kind of in general over and the big piece is the coworker that is present does see a diminishing
The more return. Additional burden.
Right. On that work at home. And I did read part of it. Uh, I didn't understand the kind of formalizing the work at home from travel work. Said something about when you're traveling for work. I mean, isn't that kind of a doesn't need to be mentioned when you're traveling for work, you're working, right? So you should be answering the phones. You should be, you're still working.
Right. I think it's more of your, if you're doing personal travel. So are you person, you know, and I have to look at that specific section again.
Business travel.
Oh, does it?
Yeah. And a couple, and the purpose, the procedures, that type of thing. I get it. It spells out during business travel, but I think we're getting away from some of the common sense of you're to work when you're on business travel and
Right. Right.
Some need it spelled out.
One thing I'll just add to challenge that a little bit is
Coming from a worker from home.
I think, I think it is, I mean, we are, we are seeing general trends of exactly what you said, kind of people employers moving back towards, okay, how do we get folks back in the office at least part of the time, right? Maybe not every day like we used to, but at least part of the time. Um, but I do think it's good to But I do think it's good to have kind of that flexibility, if you need it in the policy, to get the right person that can, you know, if, if there is the right candidate that just happens to be, you know, they want to do more remote or something. I'm not saying it's going to happen every time, all the time, but having that is good.
And at least there's something in writing that is, is for everybody, not just one offs because.
And it's only for certain positions too. There are certain positions you can't do it. And I, I think what, what you said is right. And I think what you said is right as far as giving Matt the flexibility to make those decisions. I think that's, that's what he needs. So I, I, I think this is the right way to go.
I feel I need to have the, this tool in the toolbox.
I agree.
We have to use it with a certain discretion and recognize, again, that's why we word the policy the way we do, but I just think that in the future, and this is what I've said to staff too, and, and, and the staff that don't have a chance to do this is I think this needs to be in a tool in our toolbox for recruitment in the future.
Yeah, Matt, I think you said it well, when, when, especially when we're looking at competing community, competing communities for workforce as well. If we don't have this, this, this policy in there and they do, then that creates some, some indecision. And I think I agree with that. I, I think it's good to provide that flexibility in, in the hybrid workspace right here. You know, we have really, you know, we're as a city and a municipality, we're a customer service organization. So it's got to be a really small percentage of those folks that can work at home. I mean.
Yeah, it's 20 ish percent.
That's harder than I would have thought.
Yeah. I, I mean, can all 20% work remotely? No, not all at the same time. Cause then, for example, most of it is this building. Actually, pretty much all of it is this building with the exception of some, and, and, you know, public works and but other than that, you really don't have any others.
Right.
Engineering. And that's the thing too, is like to the point of the recruitment for certain positions. You know, engineering is an example of one that I think about. That's, that's a space where it's a highly, highly competitive workforce environment. And what I wouldn't want to have happen if, at least having this tool in the toolbox would get maybe an applicant to think about, oh, there might be an opportunity for me. I might live wherever that remote work is at least something that we can talk about. And if we're struggling to fill a vacant position, there's going to be some new things that we're going to be willing to consider. Potentially of a, of a remote employee for especially some of those technical positions that are hard, when you only have one of, or, you know, in your organization that are hard to recruit for.
The, the only other thing I wanted to ask about was I was reading through the equipment section. There is mention of using the employee's own equipment. But I don't, I don't see anything that corresponds, and maybe it belongs to an IT policy somewhere or something, but there should be some restrictions on either that we're going to put a secure environment on that employee machine in order to secure the employer, you know, our data. Or alternatively, they're going to take certain steps to make sure that there's a certain level of security that they can adhere to. Cause you know, for example, LastPass just had a massive breach. It's a password, online password. Turns out the reason the breach occurred is because some, one of the engineering team members had downloaded that data set and accessed it from their personal machine and had an outdated piece of software on their personal machine that allowed a threat actor to come in and infiltrate the entire network. And so, you know, that, and that happens more commonly than you think. So it's just something to, to think about. We might need some adjacent policies to go with that unless we're just going to issue a city machine to everybody, in which case.
And that's, and that's, yeah, we have a little bit of that in the security section where it is going to be our, our thought is, is it city equipment only?
And so in, in that case, I would actually recommend just removing the option of, of using an employee machine. It says, equipment supplied by the employee, if deemed appropriate, will be maintained by the employee. It's at the very bottom of page two.
Yeah. I think the only device we'd need to worry about there would be phones. That'd be the big one that I, that would come to my mind, but there is another change on the horizon that could change, that could push us in a, need to look at this more carefully. And that's when we move to the full cloud version of the office.
Yeah. We're still on prem.
We're still on prem. We're making that move. Microsoft is forcing us to make that move. And one of the things that you get is a better experience when you're accessing all that data when you browse where you want. And then you find yourself working potentially on your personal machine at home. But we'll have to be explicit about accessing it using city equipment, if we're going to be able to preserve some security control.
You are certainly all having to come in through a VPN though, right? And.
Access the network, but if you were accessing like a OneDrive, for example, which would be city facility, city information, then you wouldn't need to VPN to be able to do that. You would have dual factor authentication, which is some level of security, but at that point, it's not so much in our control if it's made it onto.
You can download it onto your, yeah, our, our intent right now is this is a city.
I mean, even if you're not a remote worker.
Technically, yeah.
Yeah.
I could do it at home on my personal laptop, for example.
You know, even, even with VPN, it, it's better. Don't get me wrong. It's, it's, it does protect, but it's not, it's not like a silver bullet. So it's just kind of putting together the pieces you need to get as good, like nothing is going to be perfect. And if a threat actor wants to get in, they're going to get in. But you know, mobile device management, acceptable use policies.
Which we have.
Security incident management centers, those are the sort of things that we want to just kind of keep on the horizon if we don't already.
Oh, TikTok Weaver.
And, and I will say too, some of the equipment section too, is the, because we knew it's the city provided electronic equipment like the laptop. We were more thinking of like if they have home office equipment or.
Yeah. So.
That, that was more what we were thinking about in some of that.
Might be, you know, I don't want to sound like the paranoid conspiracy theorist. But I will. You know, there, there was just a story this morning about people getting mailed USB drives and they're set to explode. That, that's obviously an extreme that I don't think will happen, but it's common for threat actors to put malicious software on USB sticks, leave it around and see who picks it up and plugs it in. And now that machine has been compromised. So you know, there are, it, it's kind of, you know, if it wasn't so malicious, it's actually kind of, you know, ingenious, some of the creative ways they come up with.
We've actually had that happen on this laptop.
Okay.
Because we, we're not, not happen in a bad way where we've stopped from a USB, you know, but we have people who bring presentations. That's why we tell them, why don't you just send it to us ahead of time?
Well, and we leave that machine off the network.
And we leave it off the network for that very reason.
Yeah. So, you know, again, a SIM or, or, you know, MDM system, but it'd be good to get as explicit as we can with those sort of things, I guess. I mean, we can't anticipate everything and we don't want to turn it into a book, but.
Right. And that's something I'm trying, yeah. Cause I know we do have those policies in our cybersecurity policies that this council has adopted. And so that was trying, yeah, we'll have to figure out what the right balance is.
I have whatever he just said, the only thing I want in there is no exploding.
The last thing I have for you again is not a, no policy drafts at this point. It's really, we're just, we've kind of this team's only had one meeting and we're just starting to really get into the discussions. But what we're starting to see and really think that we're a bit behind on as an employer is these separately banks for these major life event leaves. We've historically used sick leave, traditional FMLA, but you having to use sick leave for that FMLA leave, not having a separate leave for these kinds of life events, whether it's births, which could be maternity, paternity, adoption. And, and death is in there in a sense of, we have a traditional bereavement policy, but what are those kind of extraordinary death situations that our employees and their families deal with? How do we recognize that separately than maybe from a traditional bereavement situation? And this major health event. So you have a situation where you know, a case where a, a parent's in a hospice situation and the employee has, is helping with their brothers and sisters to balance that and some being there and not being there. Is there a way to have a leave bank that really recognizes these separate major events that are going on? That's very impactful to the employees' lives and their families' lives. How do we recognize that a bit separately? Really seeing this a lot now with employers, obviously the municipal space is a little slower to come to this than the private space. But even saw that Governor Reynolds has proposed to bill at the state level for this same kind of consideration. So don't have any more details. You know, these are things that we're kind of kicking around, but I wanted to at least mention to the, to council at this time, these are, this is where we're headed with a, a draft policy and just kind of getting initial, any initial gut checks on that. We're kind of looking at four weeks is what we see a lot of. But we still need to put a lot more definition around what that looks like. And this would all be again, with the other policies, more of a July one start. But we'll have a lot more information to come back to the, go through the process with the personnel committee, employee benefits committee, then ultimately coming back to you all.
And just for clarification on this, it comes, the policy, internal policy like this comes back to us.
All of these personnel policies come back to the council for adoption. Cause they're part of our employee personnel handbook. That's required to be adopted by the council. Yeah. So we, we won't do them like onesie twosies. We'll bring them all to you as a part of the handbook update that we do every, we're actually one of the few employers, we actually do it every year. We try to be very consistent to stay on top of changes in employment law. I know there's some cities that I've talked to, haven't done some of this in like 10 years and like I, I would be a little nervous with that. We try to do it every year. So we wanted to not have a different process. We would just include this as the, as the updates. Of course, this is a lot more updates than a normal year. And we bring this usually to you in June for adoption for a July one start.
And you currently don't have a maternity, paternity leave.
We have a policy, but what it, what it is, is it basically is the FMLA policy doesn't provide a separate leave. Employees need to use their sick leave. So, and then paternity, we, it's very much limited to our current family sick leave policy, which is three days. So we really don't have a paternity policy, I would argue. And maternity is really relying upon sick leave. But if you have, for example, a relatively new employee who is an expecting mother who hasn't had the time to build up her sick leave. That, and we've had that situation happen where we've had employees donating sick leave to that person because they run out of all their leaves. Following the birth of a child. So we, we want to be, that's a, this is more of a retention piece on that point of putting ourselves in a position to not have to have new employees worried about that in their first couple of years of employment with us.
There's a couple local boards that are struggling with this issue right now.
So. So that's the, kind of the gamut of where we're at. And what I wanted to do tonight is just again, get a gut check with you all where we're headed. All of these items will be coming back for you as a normal approval processes, as I mentioned, whether it's the employee handbook or your formal adoption that we do of the pay ranges and pay matrix. Those are typically in April and then the policies won't come until June. But again, just to gut check on where we're at, pretty happy with a lot, a lot of heavy lifting that you've seen of folks behind me and another, other parts of the organization and then the personnel committee with you all up there on all these items.
Well, Dan, personnel.
Well, I'd just say that it's been a lot of work. Obviously you guys could see that there's a lot of stuff in here. You know, Matt and his staff have done a lot of work to get this to where it's at. And I know it's been a goal of Matt's for many years now, as far as the whole eval process.
Five, five years.
It's been a long time coming. It's been, you know, we vetted it quite a bit. We pushed back in certain areas. We were encouraging in, in other areas. And, and you know, I think with like the revised pay matrix, one of the, the big concerns we heard was that the employees felt it was too complex, too difficult to understand. So I think the new matrix hopefully satisfies that, simplifies it, but it still maintains the philosophy that we've always wanted where we're paying for superior performance, right? You're, you're going to, or you're going to provide merit for that superior performance and, and, and reward that. And so it's still, it keeps that, that philosophy going that we've had for so long. So I think there's a lot of good work and I, I definitely support, you know, what's in there. So.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah. I just want to say, I, I, I like it too. You know, it, it shows me a lot of different things, Matt. Flexibility, out of the box thinking, recognition that times are changing with remote work and, and some of the, you know, some of the, the lead banks, things of that nature. So I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
We'll move into reports. Tomorrow I will have updated numbers on the tons of patching material that we have applied since January 1st. What I could tell you all definitively tonight is that for multiple weeks now, we've had a team, a crew of five, sort of working like a train going all around the city to address the many, many areas of damaged roads that we have. That team blows it out, opens it up, sweeps it out, puts the patch in, rolls it. And they just go and go and go. So that's a five person team. Next week, we will also be renting another box to keep the cold patch material hot. Send out another crew of three. So we'll have almost a full third of the public works team dedicated just to working on potholes. Until we get to a place that's more stable. But similar to what we've seen in past years, after talking to Jerry Freestone and Jeff May as well, this is one that's going to take us a good chunk of time to get our, get back to stasis. So we keep asking residents, send us the information. We'll get it turned around as fair, as fast as we possibly can. Keep sending them. If you don't, if you have somebody reaches out to you directly, you can send them straight to me.
That's what I do. Forward.
And we get, and we get to it. We will have a standalone article in the April newsletter, specifically talking to folks about the best way to report specific locations help us get to the right spot fast, as opposed to just sending us a range on a street, like on the entire block where we then have to go out and look for areas. If we find an area that's really pocked up, like we'll, we'll hit it all at once. Of course, we're not going to just get that one and leave the one that's right next to it. But residents are doing a great job helping us out. The more specific their information, the better. Trees, Little Walnut Creek trees have been going down this week. They are completed felling trees to my eyes all the way from east of Alice's Road to the Urbendale border. That was an area that we, I was particularly concerned about because some of those trees were felt like trees that were in people's backyards. I walked it yesterday and what I was expecting to see with trees going down, yes, it's there, but in those tight areas, it actually looks pretty manageable. And I want to credit Public Works, my colleague Ray. Everybody who's been involved with the Little Walnut Creek project from the start to really get with the contractor and just express to them that culturally inclined, this really matters. If you take an approach that you don't have to get into every one of those trees, even though it's in your right of way, you're going to set up yourself up for a lot of easier path down the way. I think that they've heard that and I like where the culture is heading with it. And the crews are continuing to move west of Alice's Road, taking trees down. Many of those you can see from Alice's Road as you're looking west now. They've got to get all the trees filled by the end of this month, because then we've got the restrictions because of that. If anybody gives you a phone call about this or concerns, please send them my way and I'm happy to explain how we're approaching the tree question and talk about all the other amenities that are coming down the path.
Any questions for Pete? When does hot asphalt become available?
That depends on when the asphalt plants open up. And it is temperature driven as I have come to learn a little bit about these things. So I can't give you a specific date. There is some pro and con of using that material. One of the cons is it's kind of difficult to get in there and apply it as quickly as you can apply a cold patch. Second, you nick that asphalt patch and the entire thing can come out as opposed to a piece of a cold patch that can pop out. None of it is built to last forever. So long-term, it's how we, can we get more value out of that road that's already there today with this patching technique before we have to then go in and do a more expensive full depth patch or reconstruction?
I don't recall when I've seen such damage before. It just seems awful this way.
The freeze thaw cycle has been brutal.
Something that we've also used on some of the higher traffic roads and you'll see it on university. I drive over it every day when I go home is that we can do in the warm weather months, months is the mastic application. That is more durable, more expensive to put in, but it, it takes a little bit longer to put in, but lasts longer. I know one particular stretch that I drive over that I've been impressed, at least on university, how that's lasted. That's one that I know we've started to use more and more of that we can use in the warm weather months too, is that mastic. That's, and because of its expense, it makes more sense to do that on the more higher speed, higher traffic roadways. But that's one that I want us to continue to pursue to as a longer term, when we, until we get to that bigger patching on those higher speed streets.
The mastic, I've learned from Jeff May and from Jerry, they want to get as big a crack as you can get in there. So tide of the summer is not the right time to do it because you've got the joints already pretty tight with the expansion of the concrete, but as temperature is cool and the joints open up a little bit more, that's when they're looking to be able to do those applications. Unfortunately, we can't go get the mastic tomorrow and necessarily get it in there. If conditions aren't right. But let's say, as the opportunities present, our team has been really proactive. But let's say, as the opportunities present, our team has been really proactive, looking for better solutions.
Thanks, Pete. Our report tonight.
Yeah.
That's my night.
No reports on NCAA or.
Eric. I will provide a report in the NCAA as, as many of my colleagues here, uh, were at, uh. Uh, the NCAA is here in Des Moines. It was a sold out tournament. So it provided a tremendous economic boost to the greater metropolitan area. Um, so again, we hope to do that. We've seen this every three, four years. This is Daniel Vent here in Des Moines. Um, now how do we get the, the sweet 16 here? So I know Keston Moore is looking at that option. Um, but, uh. Very successful here. I would also add that the sweet 16, uh, the Iowa women, uh, will be playing tomorrow night at 6:30. Led by Dowling Cup alumni Caitlin Clark. So I would encourage everyone to watch that.
I didn't think you were going to miss that opportunity, Eric.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Michael. Legal counsel.
I have no report, Your Honor. I have a few items. Um, real quick, uh, next week we'll have the fire chief finalist interviews. And personnel committee will be involved with that on Monday afternoon and Tuesday morning. We've got five great candidates to. Interview and then follow up with hopefully a recommendation coming back to you all. In terms of, uh, approval of that at your next council meeting on the April 13th is at least the, the timeline at this point. Um, also that next meeting will have, uh, budget adoption, public hearing, and then the utility ordinances. So there's a. Um, work being done on that. We're pretty much ready to go. What we'll have for you is a little fuller kind of talk through the, the timeline on the stormwater one in particular. Of going to a tiered rate system as well as the irrigation tiered structures. Again, those are new things. That we're implementing and then also going to be working on, you know, public education campaigns. In the next couple of months on that too, as that'll be a, a change for the community. Um, also wanted to mention that another personnel committee, uh, conversation. Uh, that occurred a, a week and a half ago, a little over a week ago is, um, for this, uh, cycle, uh. My particular employment contract is due, um, for renewal in July 1 is having, um, uh. My executive coach and her team involved with my performance evaluation. Um, and, uh, another personnel committee would like to see that move forward, uh, as we've, uh. Uh, done on those contract renewal years. And so that will be, um, more information will come on that. I know the personnel committee would like to use that process again this year. Um, and those will be interviews, uh, phone interviews with the council as well as the department head team, and then a summary report brought together, uh, for that. So I just wanted to make the council aware of that.
Thank you.
Uh, last thing, uh, sorry.
Will that summary report be shared with the rest of the council?
That is up to the discretion of the personnel committee. And, uh, one last thing I did forget, Your Honor, too, is, um, um, just want to catch a couple of you right after this, so we can get locked down on the. Um, Circina Park, uh, groundbreaking, assuming that we see some successful bids for the April 13th meeting. Um, want to get a date locked down in late April or May for that. So we'll catch a couple of you after this. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Very good. Any correspondence? Anything else for the good of the Lord this evening? Seeing none, we'll adjourn at 7:53.